Okay, we have a quorum, Dr. Kingsley, but Dr. Chaffay is not here, but do you want to get us started? We can go ahead and get.
Let's get started and then he can take over unless Susan's there and she wants to run it. That's fine with me, too. You want to practice, Susan?
Not really. Hopefully he'll be here.
Okay, all right, so let's, let's start the board of trustees meeting for January sixteenth, twenty twenty five at six P. M. Let's start with, let's see, roll call, who's all here? I guess, Dr. Kingsley, go ahead. Who's next?
Zach, go ahead.
Yep, Zach's here.
Isn't here. Kim's here.
Okay, good. We have four people here. All right, let's do the pledge of allegiance, everybody. Go ahead and stand. I pledge allegiance. All right, perfect, guys. Okay, so Andrew, if you want to take over and do an introduction of guests or any public attendees?
So we have no guests or attendees today unless they snuck in behind me, and so we don't.
Okay.
Would be review and approval minutes.
Yeah, has everybody had a chance to take a look at the minutes?
Yes, yes.
Anybody have any concerns? No.
Hi.
Not anybody want to do a motion?
Move that we approve the minutes on the meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Susan?
I, yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay, Andrew, if you want to take over, run the show.
All right, so the next thing up is at last month's meeting, we said we would come back to bring some information regarding children's mental health in Platte County. And I know Susan and Dr. Chaffay actually attended a meeting yesterday with Tom Patrizo, who's the CEO of Beacon Mental Health, which used to be Platte County Mental Health. And they brought some information, but Taylor and her team and Tricia Rothweiler and her team also put together quite a bit of information, should be in your packet. But Taylor is going to present that tonight. Are you going to just do it off of here? Or do you want it as your PowerPoint?
Uh, that's fine. We can see that.
This, so Dan can keep up with her. She goes pretty fast.
Stay away.
All right, um, so this is the data that we have for the mental health for up to nineteen years old in Platte County. We do include a few comparative data sets from other counties as well. But the first part is really just a lot of graphs, so sorry for that. But also, we're just trying to get the data and information out. So first one is the UCL harm ER visits in Platte County. And this is the Essence data since twenty seventeen until now.
Can I ask a question about?
Yeah.
When you say self-harm, where are we talking like?
So these were anyone who visited the ER that had some sort of self-harm or self-inflicted wounds, some sort of physical appearance of of harming themselves that ended up in the ER.
I was thinking it's not related to a substance or a.
No, no, this does not include the substance.
Okay, thanks.
But an intentional.
Intentional, okay.
Harming of themselves.
Okay.
And then the next one, so this shows comparing us with Missouri. And this is kind of, this shows the rate. So the previous one with the actual numbers. And this is the rate for hundred thousand residents. Platte County is the green line there. Missouri is the blue.
So before you go further, could you go back up Taylor real quick? So we started out worse than the state of Calif or state of Missouri. And then, and then all of a sudden, we're better than the state. What happened in that timeframe to now, I guess?
Uh, well, that was during COVID in twenty twenty, so I'm not sure if that had some sort of effect.
And I also want to say that the high schools started doing the SOS programs in there as well. We, we started probably in nineteen somewhere in there.
Nineteen, okay, thank you.
That might have.
Is that all of Missouri or is it just?
I just know at the Park Hill they did.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's not necessarily all school districts in Missouri. This is something that the health department has provided a small amount of funding to support the science of suicide program in our, in our public school districts. And I'd like to think that it's made an impact and maybe this indicates that it has.
I don't know.
It's like that.
It could be.
I mean, I mean, that's sizable difference. I mean, yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't know if you can say it's causality or what you could say, but there is a difference. Something happened.
But then.
All right, Taylor, sorry.
Good, you're good. Um, so this one shows the same data, but it's segregated out by gender. Thought this was really interesting, just how many more females have had self-harm ER visits. Just wanted to point that out.
And it's a little small, but female is the green and males are the blue.
And that confirms.
So from my experience in pediatrics, the girls have more suicidal ideation and whatnot. But the boys are more lethal at it when they do it.
Yep, meals. That's what I remember.
Yeah, I suspect that that would cause some, some conflicting data there, I guess. If the males are more, more lethal with it, then you're not going to have repeat ER visit.
Exactly, yep.
Yeah.
Or they actually can get the interventions they need because they actually presented themselves in a situation that they needed to be committed and they needed the help that they needed, so.
Yeah, and to Zach's point, we know that a lot of times when males do it, they do it with more finality. You know, whatever technique they're using is far more effective.
Yep.
Well, you pull in that impulsiveness, I would have, there was a kid that is very impulsive, lost his girlfriend, girlfriend broke up with him and you wouldn't have ever thought there were any situations that he seemed to be well adjusted and everything else, but that just it was a one time like that.
You know, a family member of someone that Dan in particular and environmental staff worked with, one of the local business owners lost us on this past year. And, you know, seemed like exactly what you said, there were very few warning signs. And that's pretty tough.
They're able to hide them.
Yep.
So then this is the actual suicide attempt data again, for visits to the ER. So ones that were attempted suicide that made it actually to the ER. And then one thing I want to point out, sorry, it's not necessarily the number of people, but the number of times. So there could be repetition of if the same person.
The same person, okay.
Made an attempt several times. And then this again is showing the rate for hundred thousand comparing Platte County and Missouri.
Kim with twenty-one. Twenty-one's way down, yeah.
You know, I don't know if it was who we were talking about that with, but you know, so many of the kids were at home. And sometimes at school, you know, interactions with peers, bullying, that type of thing, a lot of those types of things. And if you're not going to school, Dan actually joked, he's pretty introverted. He's like, that would have been heaven for me. Other people are like, you know, they're starving for that interaction with people. But it impacts people different ways.
Okay, so now we have a big chunk of information that comes from the Missouri student survey. So you guys might already be aware of this, but this is a survey that's conducted every other year on the even years in sixth through twelfth grades throughout the state of Missouri. However, there is a few contingencies, so every year there's different amounts from each grade who actually do it. And it's not a requirement, so it's not always necessarily the same kids. So just, just keep that in mind with looking at this data. But we have Platte in that red line there with the diamonds. And then the state of Missouri is in black. And then we also have Boone, Clay, Lafayette, Jackson, and St. Charles, just for comparison sake. And those counties are the ones with the children's service tax right now, which is why we looked at those counties. So this is the people who responded that they seriously considered suicide.
Taylor, what, what, what county is it that skyrocketed up? Was it, is that St. Charles County? Is that what I see?
That's Boone, I think.
And is that outside Columbia?
Yeah.
Columbia.
But Boone is Columbia, yeah. So is that because the college is there? And you have way more students all confined in one spot like that?
You know, it's Taylor kind of said it, so this is not, this is just student surveys. So that's not really, you know, you can't really look at it scientifically. It could have just been they surveyed a different group that answered more like this. So it's hard to say, Dr. Kingsley. It does tell us some trends, but it's really hard to say anything about causation or what's going on with it.
And it was sixth to twelfth grade, so it's not even the college, right?
Oh, it didn't even be college. Oh, wow. Okay.
But he, every, he does it the same, right?
It is the same survey, but.
It's managed the same way.
So what I think that's interesting is that Platte County started out like one of, towards the top. And then now we're at the very bottom. So I don't know if that's just your chance or something happened that we just ended up with better outcomes, at least according to the survey anyway.
We also tend to have better health outcomes in general because we are one of the most wealthy counties in the state of Missouri. So just, yeah. I think a lot of these, we are kind of better off than other places, so we can keep going. So then this one shows the students who plan suicide. Students who attempted suicide. Students who were very, very sad. Or who said that they were very.
Nothing happened in Boone County. Holy cow.
That is a good question. I don't really know anyone there, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure why. But they also might just be, it might be the size as well. I guess I don't know how big it's there.
Yeah, I tried going, see if they're saying I can use article from that time period, but I haven't seen anything yet, so. We're still trending towards the better side of things, I guess, though. That's still good.
And that's pretty consistent through nearly all of these.
So students who felt hopeless about the future. And there's, there's sixteen of these, so it's kind of a lot, but. Okay. Uh, so the survey also includes information about use of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. So this shows the students who used alcohol during that time.
If it's told the truth. Do they tell the truth?
Well, that's the other thing. If there's, there is bias, so it's like they would have had to have admitted that they.
Yeah.
As well. So then this is using prescription drugs or not prescribed by a doctor.
And while part of the survey instructions is that everything is anonymous and no one's going to know.
Oh, yeah.
Kids don't trust that necessarily and they don't want to get in trouble. So yes, there's going to be survey bias on it.
So then students who did not go to school because they felt it would be unsafe at school or on their way to school. Um, now this one we thought was interesting with Clay jumping up. So I did talk to some people at Clay County and they said that during that time there were a lot of threats for school shootings. A lot of people were threatening to bring guns to school. I'm not exactly sure why, but it has recently ticked down, so.
Wasn't that also a time of like all the George Floyd riots and things like that that were going on too? Where I know, I know working down at the hospital, there were a few times where we were instructed not to take certain routes because there were going to be people present protesting and stuff and blocking roadways.
Right, and they do have North Kansas City as part of Clay County. So that is one of the most like diverse school districts in the area. So I mean, that, that could also be a factor. So again, we can't simply say the causation, it's just.
Yeah.
Also, that's the timeframe when schools are actually closed, right? From COVID?
Yeah, right. Twenty to twenty-one, yeah.
Yeah, so that was the other thing Taylor and I talked about yesterday was that some kid could have read this as like, they didn't feel safe going to school because they might get COVID.
Yeah, that's true. I think the other way you're going after. Okay, so then students who spread mean rumors or lies about other kids at school. Some of these are like mental health adjacent where it could affect people's mental health, but it's hard to. Uh, students who posted something online or sent a text that might embarrass or hurt another student. Students who hit, shoved, or pushed another student that were not just fooling around. And they show students who were in a physical fight. Students who've been threatened or injured with a weapon on school property, which again, Clay has kind of that spike there, so. Students who are grouchy, irritable, or in a bad mood. I know some people say, isn't that just teenagers? Students who felt like not eating or eating more than usual. And then, yeah, some of these questions are from the depression question included. Students who felt like sleeping a lot more or a lot less than usual. Students who had difficulty concentrating on schoolwork. Okay, so now we moved out of the student survey. So this is from the county health rankings. So this shows the mental health provider ratio by county. And this is for all age groups, so this isn't youth specific. But Platte County was one to six hundred and ninety, while the US average is one to three hundred and twenty providers. And the Missouri average is one to four hundred and ten providers.
Taylor, I don't know how you interpret something like that because even though Platte County may have that percentage, the one to six ninety, you just go, what, fifteen minutes to downtown Kansas City? And you got access to all that stuff, more the same as anybody else in Kansas City. So that seems like an artificial thing right there. I don't know.
I know, we were just trying to show you all of the data. And I mean, that, that one kind of stood out, but again, like, we, yeah, we don't know the reasons, the whys behind them.
And Beacon had that one, too. Yeah.
I mean, if you look at it like, it just how it stays right like that, it looks like Platte County is like a desert when it comes to mental health providers, right? Like, oh, my gosh, that's horrible. But that's not really the case because you just drive the fifteen, twenty minutes downtown and you got access to everything.
You know, you and I talked about this on Friday, Dr. Kingsley. The other thing is if you have less need for a certain type of business, you're going to have fewer of those. So, you know.
Right.
One of my old bosses liked to say, you know how rich your community is? As if you go to the Walmart and look at the parking lot and see how many oil drips are on the asphalt. If you're in a more rich neighborhood, there's going to be very little oil stains. But in a poor thing, and so in those same communities, you're going to see more car repair shops on the corner, less dealership. You know, so who knows? But that would be the other thing is if you have less need.
More payday look.
Well, I think the other thing to look at that is Clay County is one to six twenty, we're one to six ninety. Clay County actually has the Children's Health Fund. And if you just look at the straight numbers, they're just as bad off as we are according to those numbers. But we, like I said, same thing for Clay County as it is for Platte. You just drive ten, fifteen minutes south and you got access to everything.
Um, the other thing we talked about, just so I don't forget to tell you, Dr. Kingsley, but you have asked why inpatient mental health care was not included, specifically not included. Um, Beacon actually answered that yesterday, and it's because by statute, it can't be.
So, so there's an actual state law that says that, that tax levy money can't go to inpatient care services? Is that what that statute says? Or what does it actually state?
I, he didn't repeat the language for Bayonne, but that is what he said.
I feel like that's the biggest need.
What's that?
That's the biggest need.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I would think they would know.
So they go into homes and they go, that's.
But that's what he comments like.
So it seems to me that, that if Beacon wants to really make a big difference and, and make a change, it was, you would think they would go to the state legislature and talk to the governor as well and see if you can get that statute changed so that you could do an inpatient service or have money, tax levy money, go to some situation like that. It seems that would be, I think, better effective use of time and money, get that done. And then, because you and I have talked about this, to me, it goes, you build an inpatient service that you can take care of the immediate concerns of teens that want to hurt themselves, right? Or children, teens. And then you build everything around that where you have access to the clinics and the follow-ups and the outpatient visits and all that kind of stuff. But if the immediate issue, that's where the inpatient service comes into, into play. I would be curious to see if somebody, if, let's say there's a fifteen-year-old that is suicidal and they show up at the ER at St. Joe's North. Where, where did they go from there? Do they get directly admitted to the, the mental health services of children's mercy? Or?
They stay there.
Once, once they're, but yeah, once they're found medically stable or whatever, they have to still be inpatient. If, if they have a plan and they, they repeat that they want to hurt themselves, you have to commit them. You have no choice, right? So then I'd be curious how that goes.
I used to have at St. Luke's in Smithville. But they don't have kids. Mental health beds for kids for high schoolers. I know that some of our kids were up there at one point, but we had talked yesterday that they closed that.
Yeah, and so Dr. Chaffay is not here, but that is a dialogue that he and Tom were having. So I think they may be speaking again offline, but you might talk to him, Dr. Kingsley, because his thoughts were almost identical to what you kind of expressed. And so.
When you're in the trenches, when you're in the trenches with the, with, because I, some of the jobs I do, I've actually worked at inpatient psych hospitals, pediatrics. Uh, there, I mean, there is immediate concerns and there's not many beds available. So what will happen is you may have to be shipped to a whole nother state sometimes. And I did the inpatient care at, in Omaha at Boystown. We had children being shipped from Sioux City, Iowa. We've had somebody come all the way over from Iowa City. We had somebody from Missouri, I think, was sent up that way because there were no beds for them to go to. So they had to go there. That's what I'm saying. So I think inpatient services would be, would be the start and then, then go expand out from there. Go ahead, sorry.
The high school would go to the ER for two or three days. And then they, okay, they're stable, so then they go home and they're back at school in two days. I mean, it's just, it, there's something that, that the system isn't working somehow, so.
And then, and like we've already alluded to earlier, a lot of these kids are repeat offenders, right? So it would be nice to get them into a pipeline system where they can get the immediate help they need and then also the follow-up need. And then if they need another immediate need, it's right there again that we can just kind of keep on top of, of these kids that need the most help. That's the way I see it. I'm not saying it's the right way, but to me, that seems like the more practical approach.
Well, and what Beacon did or Tri-County Health did at the time is we, our numbers were increasing on kids that were having problems. And so they hired a specialist counselor and were, that counselor was at Central Office. And then the social workers took, there were ten slots. And from all the schools in the Park Hill School District, if they needed extra help or they needed a clinic appointment and they couldn't get to a psychiatrist, the social workers made a triage them and who got to see that counselor. But now that fund, they have no monies for that anymore, so that's not being done at all anymore. So.
But I mean, it all, it all really does come down to funding. I mean, there's, there's funding for, for other acute issues. Like, I mean, we really should be treating it like if somebody has a heart attack or a stroke, what do you do? You go to the hospital, you get your acute care services inpatient. Then when you're stabilized, we don't just say, hey, see you later, hope you, you know, do well. We've got, you know, post-operative cares, we have post-stroke cares, we have rehab facilities. There's lots of money going towards those things. And with mental health care, we just don't have enough funds, like, like earmarked specifically for those things. And it's, it is, it's a, it's a miscarriage of our healthcare system that, you know, would just, we just need to have more monies to be able to afford to have these, these things in place.
I agree. But I still getting back to kind of what I said earlier, it's amazing that Clay and Platte are almost exactly the same. And Clay has their children's fund for these services. So I know they, they appear a little bit better, but it doesn't seem like much. So that's, I find that interesting.
If you're going to make a significant change, it needs to be in the inpatient side, to me, I mean.
Yeah, so I think, I think Beacon and what's, as the other companies, what's synergy, I believe, right? That, to me, that should be where they concentrate their efforts is to see if we can change that, that statute, that we can move in that direction and then expand the services that way. But I, I'm not privy to any of their conversations, so I don't know what they're thinking about that.
Partially, but I think there's also, they were talking about, they go into, Beacon goes into homes and there's family counseling, sometimes they do the family counseling at the schools. Sometimes it's not just the kid, it's not just suicide, it could be depression, it could be anxiety, it could be, you know, there's.
Yeah.
The anorexia stuff, usually they can get hospitalized because it's a physical thing. Those I could get in the hospital. Anyway, okay, I'll shut shut.
Okay, so this shows the nine eight eight data. Um, so nine eight eight started towards the end of twenty twenty-two, which is basically a crisis hotline. So this shows the trajectory. So the green shows twenty twenty-three and the blue shows the twenty twenty-four call data. And then, so the months with the highest data were June and July, which I also thought that was really interesting because I would have thought it would be in the winter.
Yeah.
But it wasn't. And then on the next.
Actually, not just winter, but during a school year month.
Yeah, I mean, so maybe this. Yeah, I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to say. Uh, so then this shows the same information, but this includes quarter three and quarter four of twenty twenty-four. So it is increasing the calls to nine eight eight. But I mean, again, we can't say necessarily, necessarily it's because the need is increasing. It might just be the awareness around the nine eight eight hotline has increased, but it is going up. Then we also included a couple of drug overdose data. Just note, this is for ten to nineteen-year-olds. We didn't include under ten because it's not, I mean, that could be accidental ingestion. Or it's likely to be accidental ingestion. And then this shows the same thing over compared to Missouri as that rate for hundred thousand again. Okay, so just really quickly, wanted to talk about this children's service tax in these other counties that currently have it in Missouri. So we had reached out to some of the other counties just to get some information on what they were doing. Now, it was over the holidays, so either we, some of them either didn't respond or they said they'd get back to us and hadn't gotten back to us. None of them really showed us data that was, that like proved anything about the children's service tax. Again, it's like really hard to prove causation. And then also some of them are relatively new. So Lafayette started in twenty twenty-four. And Clay's, Clay's and Jackson started in twenty seventeen, Boone started in twenty twelve. But yeah, so I mean, they have dollar amounts that are available. Most of them did not really have much evidence to show if it was working, which I think, I think Dr. Chaffay really wanted. But I think it is hard for us to say that.
Well, I'm back to Dr.
He was interested in doing a study potentially, so.
Yeah, and Boone or. Beacon was going to, I think, look into that.
Right.
And look at some diameters that were, maybe they could do some measuring. So they were going to do more research into.
Right, if we get that information, we can also share that with you.
But that's one of the things Dr. Kingsley and I had talked about is, you know, a lot of these children's funds, like, just because they're just counting the wing flaps, we funded this. Just because they're just counting the wing flaps, that we funded this many programs, we have this many contacts. But there's no correlation to. At the outcome data, it's kind of hard when you're trying to look at cost effectiveness and trying to make sure you're. Putting your money where you should, you know, it makes it difficult, and I think.
We just need justification of the funds. I think if people could see a little bit more of that, it would be more.
And that conversation we did have for quite a bit of time yesterday with Beacon.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I think, you know, Dr. Shope is a, you know, feels very similar to you on that topic. And so that was brought up and we had a discussion around it.
I was gonna say, uh, it's kinda what I've told Andrew in the past and, and Dan too, is like, when you guys have successes, you kinda have to brag a little bit, right? Everybody wants to, you know, talk about the bad things and whatever, but when you, if something good happens, you wanna, you wanna pat yourself on the back, you wanna brag it to the world, right? The fact that none of these, uh, these children's service taxes, uh, results have been, you know, the, the successes have been trumpeted. Kinda is concerning. I mean, what do you say, that the silence is deafening? Um, and so you would think if there were successes, they would, they themselves would be telling everybody, like, look at us, our numbers are down or. Or we, we've reached so many more, uh, students because of this plan and, and it works with, you know, we have previous data and shows that now it's, it's so much superior now. And, and the fact that that's not available, they themselves don't have the data to back up kinda what they do. That, to me, that's a slight, that is slightly concerning.
Well, one thing that did come up, which I, I really think that way a lot too. But one thing that Tom gave us an example, which really kind of opened my eyes a little bit was the, is it eight eight eight?
Nine eight eight.
Nine eight eight hotline calls, because we're like, it would know, it'd be very helpful to know, you know, like. What age these kids are and what kind of like, what's their zip code is and all this kinda stuff. So you could compare the data. And Teddy said, he's like, yeah, they're calling in crisis. They are trying to answer. Survey questions like that. And so, and they also call back. So that's part of like. It's not the whole thing, but that's part of the problem with, when you are calling in and you're completely anonymous. It's hard to say, did those content, you know, then having that resource, did that make any change? Or are those the people, are those all the people that don't end up trying to hurt themselves? Are they those people? You know, it's really hard if everything's anonymous. And it's kinda hard to get that info. I'm not saying the info still wouldn't be important. I'm just saying that kind of opened my eyes to why it might be a little more difficult.
I guess that's where you start working in on people that do present to ERs and other facilities. As far as like, having the general question of have you ever called? Like a hotline and those kinda things. And then you start being able to collect that kinda data to retrospectively like compare and. And that analyze whether or not, while we're getting this increased volume of calls. And we're seeing this increased volume of people presenting to the ER, they say they've called hotlines or they haven't, and those are the ones that we're missing somehow. And they're winding up, you know, causing self-harm and, um, we need to do a better job of reaching out to them. So. Like, that's where, you know, you can, on the backend, start finding out some of that data.
Yeah, I just think that it would be, it'd be who them and us, if this, if, if Platte County decides to go down this road. That you would wanna have the data to back up why it's important to have this fund. You, you, you don't want, you don't wanna have accusations that it's nothing just but a slush fund to fund the bureaucracy or something. You wanna be able to, to, to provide the data to show, no, this is more than just what you think to be a slush fund. This is vitally important because of X, Y, and Z. So if, if something like this were to come to Platte County, I would definitely think that would be important. So it's easier to make your arguments of how important this, this fund might be. If you have the data to back it up.
And I think they heard that from, from us yesterday.
Uh, so these are the services that, these are some of the main services that were covered. Um, so a lot of the interventions include counseling and therapy. Crisis intervention, prevention programs, respite and temporary shelter, housing. Home and community-based interventions, outpatient psychiatric treatment and substance abuse treatment. And then other services for teen parents and then school-based services. So we're also asked about the Clay Platt Ray Mental Health Board of Trustees. So that is a levy that is. Comes from property tax across those three counties and it includes those services on the right. Uh, now the Children's Service Fund is a sales tax, um, and it's specifically designed for youth. Obviously, that's one of the big differences. Uh, and it's only for those specific areas that are listed in the statute. Um, so. The mental health levy obviously includes all ages and they also fund different things like drug courts and substance abuse treatment. And then we've already talked about that. We are not allowed to, yeah, so with the Children's Service Fund, it's not allowed to fund inpatient treatment. All right. So then we also just wanted to talk a little bit about what PCHD has been doing for mental health. So first of all, everything that we do is population-based. So we are focused on the whole population. Um, and not individual one-on-one type things. So one of the big things is the Grow Gathering and that's, um, for sixth and seventh grade girls. Um, it's a program that is done so that, um, to prevent, um, mental health issues. In young girls. Uh, so we facilitate and teach some of those sessions, uh, or sorry, when I say we, I mean, our health education team. Does some of those sessions. Uh, we also do something called the Handle of Care Program. Now, this one we don't directly do, but we help promote it. And then we're also working on getting trained in it. But the Handle of Care is essentially if there's something. That happens at a child's home, um, the school is notified where, well, yeah, so in the case that a police officer is brought in. Uh, the school is notified so that the teachers know, you know, maybe this kid is having a bad day. Give him a little bit of grace, give him some time and help them. In order to help them get over some sort of traumatic event. We also aid in the Signs of Suicide Program. And so that is like a youth prevention program, which they also mentioned, Beacon, that they do that as well. Uh, we provide funding for that for the schools to do that. Um.
And it is a small amount. It's through the MCH grant through the state and we basically pass it through. So it's not a lot of money, but it does help buy some materials and stuff.
Yeah, so a lot of what we do is through the Maternal Child Health Grant and that grant is largely focused on mental health of youth in Platte County. Um, so I know we mentioned doing the Owala Water Bottles with some mental health sessions and different positive messaging. Um, and then we also have partnerships with the schools and on the next slide.
So the picture there is actually a bunch of kids with the Owala Water Bottles. And they have the stickers on there, the ones that they selected. That had positive mental health messaging that our team kinda found these and they're actually pretty fun stickers. I'm very interested to meet the girl in the top right who just has a Platte County. Cause we know that's the coolest.
So, so, uh, sorry Taylor, can we go back one more time? So Andrew, so these programs that we have, how long have they been in place? The, the gathering, the handle with care, how, how old are these programs?
We will let Dan talk about that because those are actually his team that does that.
Yeah, some of them, uh, like the Handle with Care Program has probably been about five years or so. As well as Signs of Suicide, uh, maybe even a little bit, um, older than that. Um, Susan, do you?
I was trying to think, probably seventeen or eighteen.
Yeah, so, so six or seven years. Um, and then the Maternal Child Health Grant also supports some other, uh, programs like the Arrive Alive Events that the schools do. Um, to prevent those unintentional injuries. Um, maybe not as much mental health messaging around that, but, uh. There's definitely, uh, you know, safety messaging, unintentional injury messaging.
So the Youth Suicide Prevention Program, how does that actually work? How, how do you get involved in that situation as, as a health department?
Um, yeah, really, we just provide the funding. I think it, the implementation of the programs is done by the school districts. And I'm not exactly sure what all that entails.
Oh, it entails a, a big half a day, bringing all social workers in for most of the schools. Um, we have different people assessing kids, they're all watching a film and filling out a form. And then that all goes, uh, to like a main. Area and then those are all looked at. And if there's a kid in there that someone has mentioned, I mean, however the points are. And then that's divvied out between people that are doing assessments with the kids. And you do a Columbia with, with each of those kids, depending on the criticalness. But it is. For a school of two thousand, it, it's a whole half a day. Um, usually you'll find. It usually was between probably three and five kids that would go for immediate help. Um, but you could at least put your eye on those that if they are, you know, answered honestly. Starting to get them some treatment or talking to the counselors or talking to the social workers.
Now, other counties doing the same thing in Missouri. So all the other counties that were compared.
Not all of them. I know we've had it cast and we started about the same time.
It is a huge undertaking. Very organizational skills are needed.
So the, the Grow the Gathering focuses on key challenges facing young girls. What, how does that program play out?
Um, can I get back to you on that? I'll get you some more detail. Email the, uh, board with some more detail about what that program.
The Girl Gathering. Taylor has notes on it.
I have notes, but I mean, it's, it really is just a program that's focused on girls' suicide rates, just because they are higher. Um, they do different statements like focusing on challenges that face youth, substance abuse, mental health and building resilience.
So I guess what Dr. Kingsley probably was wanting to know, is that like a health fair or are we invited into the school? Just how does that?
Yeah, how do you, how does it actually work?
Similar thing where it's like a day, I don't know if it's the whole day, but we do some of the facilitation and we help plan that.
With you on how the logistics of it work.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, that would be great if you could include me in that as well, just so I can see what, what it actually is.
We may just present it at the next meeting.
We do have another, uh, contract, the, um, childcare consultation contract where we. Uh, our staff's involved in providing some resilience training, um. Kind of focus on those childhood, um, adverse childhood experiences faces. And, um, trying to teach the kids resilience and teach the providers, kind of a train the trader type program.
So what I will tell you, and this is a little bit different from the other places that I've worked, is that the health education team for years. Has had great relationship with the schools and other entities throughout the county. So while I don't know exactly how these classes and health fairs and things start. I do know that these partnerships have existed for a long time and we'll talk to you more about it. But Dan, I know you've always been impressed by, you know, Stacy and Chelsea, who are no longer with us. But Tom, Sherry, Ch- Sherry Kisker, they did a ton of work to get in and partner with. The staff at the schools that do these types of programs. We'll give you more of the details on how that act, the mechanics actually work, but this is stuff that we have done for a long time. And it's the same way for like the Arrive Alive, how we integrate and do that.
So the Maternal Child Health Grant, um, basically provides, is like, uh, it's a federal grant. That provides funding for mothers, youth, children, adolescents. Um, and so we use this funding to do kind of like mini-grants for the schools. So each school is allowed to do different things with it, but a lot of them have similar programs. So Park Hill School District is the largest, so they get the, the most amount of money. Uh, but they do, they have done things like, so the Screenagers under the influence, which I think we've talked about, there was a viewing, um, for that. Which is related to smoking and vaping prevention, um, social and emotional learning curriculum. Quite a few of the schools have that within their building. Um, and then I think it was three of the school districts do that Signs of Suicide Program. And then at the Platte County School District, they also do Growing Stronger Journals and Sensory Kits. And then they have a Breathe Easier Anti-Vaping Campaign. And then the other two, yeah, next slide. Uh, so North Platte and West Platte, they, so North Platte. Also has a social emotional learning and then they also focus, they use some of that funding for vape, um, education. And then also vape detectors. So they actually install detectors in their school. So if someone's vaping, it will. Yeah, yeah. Um, so then West Platte does a mental health week, um, and then they also do the Signs of Suicide Program. And they also use the funding to get out some more information about the nine eight eight hotline.
Can you go back? One more. You had said Screenagers was, that's growing up in the digital age and how. Social media and different things impact students. I think you've.
Addressing vaping drugs and alcohol in the digital age. And there was, yeah, so it was a film screening and then there was a panel discussion following that.
Screen time is actually increased depression and anxiety. Uh, you feel more connected, uh, but not with people. And that leaves you kind of emotionally distant, I guess. I, uh, it's not helpful.
Fear of missing out is a big thing too, where people see other people doing things and that they weren't invited to. Okay, so then some of the funding also goes, um, to some of the coalitions and. Um, the health education team is like very active with some of the coalitions that we have. So a lot of them are made up of individuals and agencies who are concerned about the health and safety of the youth within different school districts. So, uh, so West Platte and North Platte Community in Action, they are doing a community. They have community members who develop, implement and evaluate youth prevention programs, uh, in order to increase youth resiliency and reduce substance use. And then the Platte County Prevention Coalition is specifically focused on, um, prevention of drug use. And other substance use within Platte County. And then there's a couple more. So Park Hill Community Alliance for Youth usually goes by CAFI. They work to promote safe, healthy, drug-free environments. Um, within Park Hill. The Northland Coalition works to promote positive, healthy and safe lifestyles. As well as encouraging community involvement, leadership and resource sharing. And then the Northland Health Alliance Mental and Behavioral Health Task Force improves equitable access to mental and behavioral health services. And then we've already mentioned the nine eight eight is that this hotline, um, but I think one of the health educators sits on that board as well. So we are doing quite a bit related to mental health, um, but it is just that population base and preventative. Information, so.
So I have an idea, just to throw this out there, I don't know if there's something you guys have thought about in the past, but do you allow schools to do field trips to the health department? Like class, classes that come do field trips?
We wouldn't not allow it, but.
I mean, cause then you could actually, we could actually do like lectures, uh, I mean, you guys have a big, you know, the big conference room right there. Where we could actually do lectures on these things and have them in person with us and we could talk. I mean, I guess it'd be more that we could get more involved. With these issues personally.
We are. We go to the school.
But do you think it would be more gravitas if they came to us though? Like as a field trip? I'm not saying that they have to, I'm just throwing it out there, just what you think about that.
I think it's a logistic issue for the school. It's easier for us to spend ten dollars in mileage to go to them. Than them trying to bus.
Get it done, organize it, yeah.
Typically.
Yeah.
But and just if they come, if they come to the health department, be public health becomes more real. They can actually see, you know, with their own eyes, kind of what we do and why we do it and why it's important that they know that we do these programs for for kids and all that kind of stuff. I'm not saying we need to do it. I was just throwing it out there spitballing.
Well, we do have high school interns.
High school interns come.
We have college interns. So, I mean, I don't know that we'd be opposed to it. I think it might just be some logistic challenge, logistical challenges. Um, one thing I looked up, I was trying to figure out why Taylor and I were so different on the screenagers thing. And it was because there's five screenagers movies. One of them specifically addresses vaping. And then the original was about social media and everything. So you were right. So we do a lot.
Multiple, multiple things.
And that's on record too, so.
Yeah. I was right.
So so Taylor, good job. Way to do which I'm glad you guys went to that meeting with with Beacon too. So good work.
Any other questions? So what, I mean, I just am curious what came out of the meeting? Is it just discussion, similar discussions this or?
So if you look at the data that they put together in their packet, and did you email that to all the board?
Um, I did not.
If you would email it, just put it, send it to everyone so they have it. Um, Dr. Kingsley and Zach don't have it.
Yeah.
Um, but I think if you look at that data, a lot of it's very similar and some of it's exactly the same data.
It was.
Um, probably the most kind of interesting conversation that may result in some further discussion was what Dr. Kingsley had mentioned about having more inpatient strategy for the youth in Platte County. And I think everyone knows Dr. Chape has that emergency medicine background and was currently doing that. And so he said, you know, we need to talk about like strategy. A lot of the things Dr. Kingsley said, just as far as, so I think there may be some more discussion about that.
And I think he also was going back to what we were talking about, having the data, data-driven information that would justify the funding. And I don't know, um, Tom kind of mentioned a few stuff about maybe even academics, getting someone to look at all of that as a research project or something.
Right.
Looking at some different arenas that would look at some of that data. Because I think it's like, you know, most of us, we all want to help kids. I mean, it's not like we want to, but we can't just have it free for all and have no justification and no uh responsibility of the funds, but um, I mean, I.
To me, the way I looked at it, okay.
I was just gonna say, I just know being that uh being a nurse at the high school for as many years as I did, yes, there's issues. And there were things that it got to a point, I started when I started, there were no social workers. There were school counselors, but a lot of them could not do the counseling. They were academic counselors. So they brought one social worker and then it was two. And the health room, I was seeing sixty to eighty kids a day. So it wasn't like I could sit and talk to a student who was having a crisis. Um, the cuts, I would deal with a lot of cutting and that type of thing. And then I would refer them down to the count or to the social workers for counseling and it, there is a need and it, yes, I was in my little environment, but I felt felt like something is needed, but I just, I understand the responsibility of funds too. And I think, you know, there's got to be justification, basically what you were saying, Dr. Kingsley.
But I I would hate that, let's say that this passes and we have a forever tax and then it doesn't actually make a difference. Or there's no uh data to show that it actually made a difference. So five million dollars a year and nothing to show for it for in perpetuity. I I think that would be unfair to everybody. So to me, it would, it would be hoof beacon and synergy to be able to come up with this data to show, yeah, no, this really does make a difference because like I said, X, Y, and Z, and this is the data to back it up.
Or if they can't get it from the other counties and they and the commissioners wanted to look at maybe Platte County. I mean, maybe since it has passed, that they would have some stipulation of, okay, we're going to grant this amount of money and we want to see these, this data, gather this data while you do this for two years or something, you know.
The person I got at least from Tom was that he was open to looking at different ways to kind of quantify the success.
Yes.
And he did also share that the the county commission would have the authority to adopt their own ordinances. And they could put a sunshine and they could make the sunset, I'm sorry, they could make the tax sunset in that ordinance. Um, they could, you know, dictate how the money is used. So they do, the commission does have some control about what they could, who they appoint, you know, things like that. So.
I just, I I just can't believe, I did not know until I went through all this and read it that it wouldn't apply to inpatient. I just feel like that's such a.
Yeah.
Makes no sense to me at all.
Yeah. What I what I had heard was that in Lake County, for example, they put a lot of the counselors in the school, you know, directly in schools so they're readily available for the students when they're, when they have a need.
Yeah, we had that for short term.
Yeah.
That then it's not there anymore.
So the next part is my report. A large portion of my report will be under new business, so I'll skip that for now. Um, but can you scroll down a little? Oops, just a little. Um, one of the things I thought was interesting was now we've been here in this building for about a year and a half, a little over a year and a half. Um, but you can see our distribution of bottle records, birth death certificates, and food cards has kind of gotten back to where it was previously before we moved and kind of uh we're seeing, I don't know, today and yesterday. I'm not sure if we have a big new food facility, but we have had the most people coming in to take the confirmation test for their food handler ever. And it was just standing room only up there. Uh, so it's fun to see people coming and using the new facility.
Um, so word is getting out and people coming to check it out. That's pretty cool. Do we have any anecdotal evidence of what people are saying about the place?
Anecdotally, it's just really, it's a nice, beautiful facility, but and that's from clients. But Dustin and his team see it's from particularly the visitors that in the meetings that we have. You know, it's a great facility to meet in. You've all been in our big conference room here. I think most of you have seen what the big confer- big conference room we had at Parkville was our big conference room and it was in the basement. And it just always felt kind of like a bunker, which is great if there's tornadoes coming.
Yeah.
Not very welcoming most of the other time. And then, of course, in Flat City, our big conference room was probably smaller than our second largest, which isn't really that big compared to the rest of our room. So.
It was a cubby hole compared to what we have now.
Yeah. I'm going to scroll down. You all got copies of it and I talked about it last month, but the Innovative Leadership Award. Uh, there they did run that in two different papers. I forget, it may say the Platte County Citizen and the Weston Chronicle. And then so it's kind of see the nice to see the health department and the news for good good things and not something controversial or bad. Um, we did end the fiscal year with revenue that exceeded the budgeted amount. So we were at a hundred and three point six percent or four million, four hundred and ninety seven, three thirty eight. This expenditures part is actually a little off. We did not end at ninety two point three percent. We actually initially should have, for those who are here, have an updated copy of the budget. But it was actually, we ended at ninety eight point nine percent. We didn't exceed the budget. But the reason there's a difference is that represents the uncovered funds that we carried over from twenty twenty four for expenses that resulted from twenty twenty four activities, but won't be spent until twenty twenty five. So we did utilize most of the budget, but as far as where we're sitting cash-wise, we are three hundred and sixty nine thousand, four hundred and fifty four dollars better than we were in twenty three. So that's good. Um, and then I'm going to include this next thing, and I think I said I'm would do it last month. But for the lease purchase debt obligation, I'll be including this every month as well, just so we can kind of see how we're doing. Uh, but we are at two million, three hundred thousand, five hundred and ninety one dollars remaining on that lease purchase obligation. And, you know, last year, we were at about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars more. So we're taking chunks out of it. That's about ten percent. So I mean, we're, we're moving right along at taking care of that, which will keep us at probably, what do we decide, eight or nine years roughly is.
Yeah.
But then, you know, in twenty twenty two, we were at five million dollars. So we are doing some things to move us in the right direction for sure. Dan, Steve?
Um, a lot of business as usual, um, it had been involved in with Andrew and a lot of the uh um, stuff that's happening with our breaker situation, it will discuss later. But um, I did want to share some of these photos. These are the um, the checks aren't real, but there there's some of the funding we were talking about earlier. These are the the check amounts that um, the photo ops, uh, when we share that FCH funding with the school districts. They also share some funding with Northland Coalition and Youth with Vision, who are uh somewhat, I I don't want to say housed at Beacon, but uh Beacon is involved in those coalitions as well.
Can you mention Tricia and her Emerging Leaders Academy?
Yeah, Tricia um completed the Emerging Leaders Academy through KU. Um, and she graduated in uh, I believe that was late December. But uh, anyway, we're real proud of her. She's a natural leader, but she's really doing a good job. We uh Cindy does a a three-month follow-up with new employees and uh those who are um working with Tricia, say, I speak very highly of her and uh I'm sure some some of her good traits as a leader. So we're we're very fortunate to have her. Um, we did uh have to cancel Harvesters this month because of the snow. Um, but uh in December, you can see our numbers of families served, whether or households anyway, was forty nine. Uh, hopefully we'll get um in, starting in February, we'll get back to normal and start bumping that number back up again as we develop some consistency.
While Dan's scrolling through here, I will say something because Susan asked me about it. But Dan and I are both doing a leadership challenge program through the state health department. And so you should have gotten an email from an entity asking you to fill out a survey on Dan and I. And you do have to create like a login and stuff. Or you at least got one from me. I don't know if you included the board for yours.
I just included you.
Okay, so you'll be getting something to fill out something for me. It is legit.
I haven't done it. I didn't know what it. Yeah.
Susan was skeptical that it was some kind of phishing.
Yeah.
But it is real.
Okay, okay. Good to know. I have a question. How is snow removal? How's it been? I mean, we always talk about that.
Yeah, they did a fantastic job.
Just curious.
Little uh anxious to see what the bill is going to be.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah.
That was a record.
That was right. Yeah.
Um, I don't think we've received that invoice yet, but.
Okay, just curious.
They did a good job.
They did a good job. We always, like everyone, we have the same problem. And the day when it's forty three degrees, everything melts and then it freezes over at night. So you don't have a whole parking lot that's like, it's that one place that you want to step, but seems to be slick. So. And Dan had mentioned to me, was it last night? One of the nights we were leaving fairly late and he said, I think it was last night, and he said, Andrew, if you go out there, make sure you don't pay attention, so you'll fall. I thought that was kind of mean, but and then he told Michelle, be really careful and look there. So, but other than that, it's been great.
Okay, just curious because that's something that we always seem to be talking about. So.
And we did buy some, they're fairly nice looking. When you walk out, you'll see it. It's kind of like a big urn. Basically, it's a big plastic container that has salt and stuff by both the doors. So when we see those little slick spots, it has a spreader in it and we can go take care of it. It's just every day, there's a new slick spot, it seems like, as we melt and freeze.
Then the last thing I'll mention is that we uh um food establishment permit fees for two thousand twenty five were due December thirty first. And right now we've collected from all of the establishments except two, which I think is a a success record for us. Um, but Bailey is uh working with the the two establishments. Um, I think in both cases, it's just a financial struggle. And uh she's working with them to get get them up to up to speed, get that bill paid. So.
How much is that?
Uh, it can range from um like a um medium risk establishment is two hundred dollars, then a high risk is three hundred.
Okay.
And then uh elevated risk is uh as much as five hundred. So.
So that all has to do with how many steps in your food process, how many people you serve, at-risk populations. And it basically, we fill out a form every year on them and we are looking at how many times do we have to go inspect? That's why the fee increases because it's not because you're more dangerous, it's because we actually have to come. So it's all through the Hancock Amendment. If you spend more on an entity, you charge more. So, you know, the citizens aren't necessarily paying for you to have this big, huge buffet. They're paying for those inspections.
Who? Do we decide on the rates though? Or who actually decides on how much the the permits are going to be?
Yeah, that evaluation is done every year. Um, and it it is, there's, I believe, eleven criteria that we use. Um, Andrew mentioned several of them.
Um, so the 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 two businesses that are slow, you know, slow in paying, is it because they're on the higher end of what the fees will be?
I I think in both cases, it was just um they're struggling financially. Uh, one of them, I believe, was two hundred dollars.
Okay.
That individually made a per partial payment of fifty dollars. So um, we'll just kind of work out a plan for them.
Particularly on some of these smaller rest, smaller food establishments. It is, it can be a pretty daunting task to keep your head above water. But on the other hand, having safe food, I mean, having your facility inspected, that is a cost of doing business that has to be figured in.
So about food trucks.
They have to be inspected as well.
Okay.
And they follow a very similar, you know, we still do the food establishment risk assessment and they get the same type of treatment.
Okay.
Now, a lot of them, the difference is they are very seasonal. So they may not get as many inspections as a brick and mortar, but they're only going to operate three months.
So their maximum fee would be a hundred dollars for the year.
So the the permit money that that we charge, where does that money go?
By inspectors, basically. It goes back into our budget and that's how we get revenue to pay for part of that.
It's about, um, I want to say about thirty five thousand dollars um that we collect in permit fee, uh food permit fees. that we collect in permit fee, uh, food permit fees to support those three positions.
So, so where are we competitive-wise with, with the rates that we charge with the other counties around us?
We're definitely the
On the lowest.
Very lowest end, yeah, in, in the Kansas City metro.
So even Katz County, I think everyone here knows I came from Katz County. Katz County had no tax levy, so basically, we supplement these inspections with the tax levy. And Katz County, everything was based on fees and grants, so there was no tax levy money. So it basically meant those inspect, or those food permits were about, I'd say about three and a half times what people pay here.
Wow.
Okay, I think I've said this before, and, and I'll say it again. I, I want Black County to be as much pro-business friendly as we can, within reason. And uh, as long as we are highly competitive when it comes to permit costs and such, that people want to build their businesses in our county, or the food trucks come to our county, uh, I'm all for that. So as long as, as long as we can pay the bills that we need to pay, um, I just want to make sure that it's not like a, an onerous thing that it's hard for company. Five hundred dollars seems like a lot for a permit, but I don't know what that's compared to. I don't know what the equivalent high, high risk would be in other counties. Maybe they have to pay fifteen hundred dollars. I, I don't know, but.
That's crazy. I think we're doing very well.
Yeah, so, so as long as we are the, close to the cheapest in the metro area, that gets the job done. Like, I don't want to go cut things, you know, short, and then we, you know, there's something bad happen, and then we all look like idiots. I don't, I don't want that. But I, I want to be as competitive as possible and be as pro-business as possible.
Yeah, and.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
So if you're extreme high risk, you're getting a minimum of four inspections and probably five. And part of that means, you know, our inspector is driving out there, getting mileage each time. We still have to, you know, follow the, oh, the thing that tells us we can't charge the Hancock Amendment. So we are, they are getting a bargain because we are using tax levy money to supplement it. That division probably, what is a three hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar expense, and we're only charging about thirty-five thousand dollars in permits, so they are getting a good deal.
Yeah, we, we only have three or four of those elevated risk. Other, most of them max out at three hundred. Convenience stores are one hundred dollars. Um, so the average permit is probably close to two hundred, maybe two, two twenty-five.
So this goes back to what we were kind of talking about before. If, if we truly are one of the better costs for permits in, in the metro area, that'd be something we should probably brag about a little bit, and that might test more, entice more people to come to our county to, to do food trucks, or to build a restaurant, or whatever it is that they want to do. It means that seems like something that would be, but a good sales marketing thing for, for Black County.
One of the things is, it also, you know, these businesses want business, so they tend to lean towards where the population is high, but they're going to get a big consumer base. A lot of that is in Kansas City. So while it's Black County, it is actually Kansas City Health Department overseeing for health permits and that type of thing. So when you go to Zona Rosa, we are not inspecting those. But when you go to Parkville, we are inspecting those, or if you go to Flat City. So there is a big kind of difference. And those permit fees are a lot higher. And yes, Dr. Kingsley, there are plenty of people that know that when they set up their brick and mortar in Flat County, they're going to be paying less.
Yeah, when you say they're going to be in the zone of rosa.
Right, the Zona Rosa, anything in Kansas City is quite, quite a bit more.
It qualifies as high risk. You don't have to give me a long.
I just.
How many steps in food preparation? So if it, like McDonald's, or most fast food comes out of the freezer, goes into the fryer, it's timed, it's out the door. That's pretty low risk.
Yeah.
Now, my, my restaurant, I make everything from scratch. I make eighteen different kinds of sauces. I have a lot of things I cut up by hand. There's a lot of steps in my preparation. There's different holding tabs. It gets really complicated. So those are, when the more risk I only cater to people over sixty-five, that's going to make more high risk. So like a um, retirement home cafeteria, a lot of times gets boosted up, just because
They're fine.
Older people are going to be more susceptible to foodborne illness. And there's a whole list of questions. I don't know, Dan, if.
Yeah, we take volume.
Just, yeah, I'm just curious.
But you know, I work in Weston, I have a little boutique restaurant. I serve three hundred people a week versus I'm in, you know, right off the interstate, and I serve three hundred people in an afternoon. You know, those types of things make a big difference.
It's on my head.
Dustin. Um, Jack, under my report, um, one of the more fun portions of my job is working on a social committee, and we had a pretty fun month for December, and all the holidays and everything, it's all great that. We did like an ugly sweater contest, door decorating contest, our holiday party, uh, most stocking stuffer day. And staff really had a lot of fun with it, especially like the ugly sweaters and door decorating contest. Um, they really got into it. Um, I know Andrew's a little sour about who won. I think he was hoping he was gonna be the victor, um, but Alaska was outvoted. Um, and I know Dr. Kingsley and Dr. Chafay attended our holiday party with staff, and they said they really enjoyed it, so. I think overall, it was a really, really fun thing. We got a lot of great feedback and uh, participation this year. So we're looking forward to doing some more activities like that going into this year. And uh, just, you know, building our team a lot more again by participating in a lot of different group activities, and just having some fun, because you know, after you know, all over years of COVID, moving into a new building, it's been a lot of stress, working through accreditation, we need to have a little bit of fun in what we do. Um, so we got some fun things we're working on for this year. Um, we did have, we were helping with um, health educators completing the daycare audits for the MCH grant, making sure all their kids are up to date on immunizations. Um, I didn't update this, but there is, uh, we have two active TB cases we're currently working on right now, so. Uh, Jen's got her hands full with that, uh, but taking really great care of those patients. Uh, WIC has a pretty interesting year approaching for them, so their uh, cards are going from an offline mode to an online mode. So essentially, what that will allow them to do is currently, they have to return in person to get like their money put back onto their cards. Um, each month, from when it goes to the online mode here in May, they won't have to come into the building. They'll be able to do that digitally, virtual, and uh, reboot uh, their clientele's cards for that. So they're really looking forward to it. State's been pushing for that. They have a lot of different trainings through providing over the coming months to get them all on board for that, so. I know their entire staff is really looking forward to it, so it'll be pretty cool to see.
And it's really going to be a big change for the clientele, because and this has been the way every place I've worked. A lot of those folks that take advantage of the WIC program, they don't have great transportation. And so it's always been a struggle, because they have to figure, I mean, to get help in one area, they have to like overextend on the transportation side just to get here. So this will make things so much better for a lot of the people who utilize WIC. It's gonna make a big difference, I think.
Yeah. And so I can probably speak to this, having a few kids. Um, rounding them up and traveling with them is kind of a hassle, so being able to do that from home would make things a lot easier, so. Yeah, we're really looking forward to that, so I think it'd be a very uninteresting thing to see.
The thing I will miss is they always, or a lot of the parents bring the kids in, and sometimes it's because they have to do weights and stuff. But sometimes it's just because they're coming in to reload their card, and they have to bring the kids. So we have a lot of youth in the building, and you get to hear the youth, and every once in a while, like last week, I think there was a young man who was probably about five, four. Um, who has, had escaped grandma and came to see us in the admin wing.
Okay.
And we were happy to see him. Grandma was not so happy. He was really happy. He was loud, but he was very happy. So that'll be the one downside.
See, I'll be the opposite of that, because my office is right next to that waiting area, so I'll appreciate a little bit of the. So, um, I spoke held, so I didn't have their numbers, never, I created a report, but I did reach out to them. They do have numbers for that. Um, you can see twenty twenty-three numbers for our family healthcare were way higher than the previous two years. That kind of really just went off. To compensate for that, I kind of took the average, so about seventy-seven visits for the month of December, the previous three years. Um, Swoop had a total of fifty-five patients, they saw. Um, a little bit difference between our days, we had more days in our clinic, um, during the month of December, when our, we operate our family healthcare, so of course, we're like we'd see more clientele. Um, when I broke that everything down and did my average for patients per day, um, doing that seventy-seven patient, three-year average, we were averaging about nine patients per clinical day. Swoop's currently averaging about eight. So they're pretty close in what their numbers are for what we are running, um, and still within their first year, so I feel like that's doing pretty well on their, uh, in their successes.
And they're still doing, having growing pains. We got an email maybe a week ago about, you know, why did you all remove the exam table out of one of the exam rooms? And we did do it. We absolutely removed it at the request of Swoop. Um, dental hygiene people. And so it was like, yo, I think I called you, Dan, and said, why did you move that? And he's like, well, I told you, Andrew, you need to remember, you need to listen to me. It was because we've been asked. So we're still going through some growing pains. I guess trash cans got removed, and they asked us about that, and it was because they were wanting, they ordered new ones. And I, I think they told us to take off, so. But it's just, we're still all working to, it is very interesting, and I know sometimes our staff may feel a little frustration, but we're living next to a brand-new neighbor and still trying to learn to cohabitate, and so it'll take a minute.
Yeah, I know they're ordering a lot of new supplies too, like the trash can things. The reason why is practically now, because they, they've ordered their own, have more coming in. Um, same with a couple of their scales that they had for, uh, for infants. Um, they ordered their own one, so we have reviewed our old one and busted with that, so. Just as they're getting set up and like, okay, we we like yours, but we want ours kind of to be uniform what they're used to using at our other clinic sites and things like that, so. But uh, as far as any concerns or uh, complaints, I haven't heard anything from any of the clients or from the staff there. So I know, I do know they really love the building, they really love being here, so I know they're looking forward to getting dental hygienists in, in here uh, this year, so it'll be uh, been a very good opportunity.
They do have a post-care survey that they send out to people. And Dustin, correct me if I'm wrong, but what you told me is they, they send it out, they just haven't gotten any responses.
Yeah.
Typically, those types of things, and I think you all know this, if someone's mad, they'll fill it out. If everything's kind of okay, they don't fill it out. So that's what I expect to have happen.
Yeah.
But they do have, I know Dr. Chafay had asked a couple of times, do they do any kind of post-visit follow-up? They are actively doing it. They just aren't getting any feedback.
One thing, we started doing a previous clinic, I managed, is we would ask people to do it when they were there.
Yeah.
And have an iPad, and they would do it. And then, you know, they, it was obviously confidential, but then we had more responses. And because, you know, your one response, your angry response overshadows, because you've gotten two angries and no one else responds. So your results look a little skewed.
We'll mention it to them. I'm sure they probably follow whatever procedure they follow for all their clients, but we'll tell them that Kim's explaining, so you should do that.
Just do that.
And they'll probably change it.
I doubt it. But anyway, I'm just saying, that's something I've experienced. We had, we struggled with getting our results, and that was always patient satisfaction surveys were not coming in, and then our percentages looked terrible, and it's because the two people that filled it out are the two that were unhappy the other day.
When were we, against the estimation of the dental starting?
They're hoping sometime within the first of the year, so hopefully, I haven't heard any more updates on that. Um, so I'm not sure where.
They were on the news, I forgot where it was at, but they had a big presentation on one of the news stations on their dental getting started somewhere. But I don't know where that was at. I was like, no.
I'll, I'll definitely know when I see her, but I'm having updates on that one, yeah, so. So hopefully, very soon. Uh, are there any questions from my report?
Okay, um, so as far as accreditation, actually, an exciting update that I haven't mentioned even to Andrew yet. Um, but today, actually, it's not a bad thing. I mean, you're not gonna be like, so. But um, we completed our first full domain for providing all of the documentation, writing the documentation sheets, putting them together. Um, so we're calling that fully packaged. So there's the ten domains. Now, we did, we finished domain four, which focuses on community partnerships. It's the smallest domain, so there was only like five measures. Some of them have like up to fifty, um, but we have finished that, um, so we had a solid.
Ten percent level?
Um, not quite. Yeah, because it is the smallest domain. Yeah, we could say ten percent, but.
It's a victory.
Okay, ten percent. So, um, and yeah, shout out to the health education team for really helping with that one. They put together a lot of documents, and that has been really, really great. Um, so, exciting. Um, also, so we're working on, or starting the strategic plan with MUCP, that's the Missouri Center for Public Health Excellence. Um, and they're gonna be our consultant. We are just waiting for Jen Snyder to review our contract, um, to sign that and move forward on that. Um, in the month of December, we started a quality improvement and workforce development committees, and so these are gonna be regularly meeting committees. Uh, we've started working on the quality improvement, um, plan. And so we're figuring out, um, different things, different projects that we're gonna be working on for quality improvement this year. Um, other big things, the Northland Health Alliance is also doing strategic planning, so I'm gonna be representing Flat County Health Department um, for their strategic planning process. We are also finishing up our community health assessment, so that is pretty much finished. We just have to choose the community health improvement plan um, strategic objective, so that will be next Thursday that we're doing that. Um, and those. Um, I guess that's, that's the main things. Any questions on that?
I'm sure it feels good.
Yeah, yeah. Right. I know.
Yeah.
One done. And, you know, and we figured like the first one will probably take the most time, or you're still trying to figure out the best way to do it and everything, so. Yeah, we got one done. Well, congratulations.
So Susan, finally.
Oh, me. So we met on Tuesday. Um, and Angie Hughes was at our meeting. She was pretty much the meeting, um, for the uh,
Most of.
She's with Mosso. Yes. With Mosso. And we signed, I don't know if we signed like the, the pizza paper that gives her the okay that we're gonna go on with the program and, and get things started.
Yes.
Um.
There should be a form that we need signature as well, or that we.
No, we signed it.
Okay.
Yeah, we signed that, yeah. To get, get things started. I don't know if Dr. Kingsley was needing to sign. It looks like it had the, the present.
We're actually going to need you to sign the minutes is what we needed, and you probably already did.
I came in.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
I, I need to come in to sign stuff or no?
Uh, Kim needed to sign something, and she took care of it.
And the one form we were debating that you were needing to sign, um, Andrew and I were able to sign it and get things started, so.
That's fine. Perfect.
Anything else you want to say? She gave us a big presentation on how people, what the interest rates are, and we'll be getting that form. Is that every month or every week?
Every week.
Every week.
So we'll be getting a rate sheet every week?
Yeah.
And I think. And I think, so we have homework, there's all kinds of forms that we have to fill out and kind of. All about our finances and stuff, and our accounts that will be taking stuff out of. So I believe what we're going to do is we'll get that taken care of this month, next month at our meeting, we'll actually talk about how we're going to invest it. And then we'll present to back to the board, just so it won't be anything risky, it'll be liquid, a lot of it will be liquid.
Because with the liquidity fund, you can take in and out and no fees.
And it is about a half a percent roughly better than what we are currently getting in our money market account. So it's more money. Um, interestingly, probably on the rate sheet, the most interesting thing, and Susan kind of said, is that right? But for CDs, the six-month term has the best rate, even over like a hundred and eighty-day term. And, or not, that is six months.
Yeah.
Over the.
Longer days.
Or longer.
The shortest right now on days gives you the higher interest rate, and the longer term gives you the lowest interest rate.
Which was interesting.
Yeah, it's kind of.
How the banks are right now, too.
Yeah, it's because of inflation, I guess, yeah, yeah. But the rates as, uh, for the CDs as of our meeting day were, was four point four five. And in the, uh, liquid, it was four point two six. So even keep it in that liquidity fund, you get a pretty good percentage. It's not a lot of difference, but. Maybe what we, what did we say, maybe like two thousand or something?
A year.
Yeah, a year. Um. So more, more to, more information to come on that. And then the other thing we talked about, uh, Michelle is still working and Cindy on. The new computer system, whether they're going to go with a different company, but Palosity and Rippling. She's, they've looked at, so they're still investigating a few of those.
So I will tell you that they had a couple more visits and discussions. They are really leaning towards Palosity. They are trying to work out the, um. Costs for that, you know, because of the expense, unless there's a contract that has already been competitively bid, we'd have to put it out for bid. I actually sent Michelle with, um, Cindy's finance team. I did some research, I found three or, I think, three different competitively bid. Things that we can use, so they're kind of smaller. Two of them were county government, one was state government, but they all would have posted it and put it out for bid. So we actually would get better pricing than what they have on their website, so that is good. Cindy said something to me, and she's like, yeah, they were really excited about Palosity when they went back and asked their follow-up questions. And that's the one they really want to pursue, so.
And just in kind of review, the Palosity would be the time card system, human resources, information, um.
Training model.
Training models, just one whole system, instead of one section, the education department. Trying to figure out, getting all the people do all the educational things, it's all, all be on the computer.
Yeah.
So that's one of the things, we have a, um, PhD intern coming. The spring, and she is working on a training curriculum. Well, we'll be able to put that whole thing into Palosity. And it will be based on your position, so maybe the director, Dan says is unteachable, so I won't have very many classes. Where the assistant director, Taylor, super smart, she'll have lots of courses, she'll have to. So it'll, but it will be that way for everyone, so we have, um, for emergency preparedness funding. Everyone has to have incentive man training. And that'll be on there, and we'll know when we onboard people, they've taken it, and it'll be one nice catalog for everything, along with the reviews and everything.
Plus, each employee can do it on their own time. I mean, not, I mean, they would be paid while they were doing it, but when they.
Yeah, it'll integrate well with our LinkedIn learning and some of the stuff we get through Midwest Public Risk, so.
That's it.
Financial report, and then we need to review and approve the bills. So if there's any questions on the finances.
Hey, do we have a motion to approve the bills?
I move with, that we pay the bills, monthly bills.
Do we have a second? Second, okay, any further discussion, Susan?
Yes.
Kim? Zach?
Yes.
And me, yes.
Yeah, there's car alarm. No fee resolution this time.
No fee resolution, you said?
No fee resolution.
Okay, good.
Kim's talking, give me out the side. I don't think we have yet.
The one, the sixty, yeah, yeah, we did.
Yeah, sixty thousand.
Yeah, yeah, delivered to.
Oh, for the lease purchase? Yes, so.
Yeah.
We decided last year, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about something else. I thought you were talking about the reserve accounts. Anyway, for the big principal payment, we had discussed this last year, instead of adding the extra on every month, it just made more sense. To make that lump sum at the beginning to save the most interest, so we did make that payment this month. Yeah, Dawn asked me the other day if that's what we're doing, and I said, that's what we decided. Cindy is up next with United Medical Services Agreement.
Um, yes, this, uh, United Medical is, um, who we, it's our Oracle, United Medical. Um, we use them for our billing services. Um, we were scheduled for a renewal in February of their, uh. Current contract, and we went back to them. Uh, Dustin and I both have been, uh. Have, have started kind of looking and talking about replacing our EHR system. And, um, we wanted to get, I was trying to get away from the three-year, um. Succession, uh, rule, so I had, we reached out to them and asked if they would consider reducing that, and they have agreed to just one-year renewal terms.
Okay.
So that we're in a better position to.
If you find something better.
Yes, continue to look.
Easier. So that's friendly.
Yeah, the only change to the contract is the terms for the renewal. For one year. So we just need a motion to.
Can I ask a quick question, though? So basically, we, we're still sticking with Oracle, or we're not sticking with Oracle, I'm trying to read, read how this works.
For a year.
Yeah.
For just a year, and then we'll, at that point, we'll decide where we want to go further, is what you're saying.
And if we want to continue, we can for another year, so.
Okay, I got you, I got you. Okay, guys, do we have a motion?
Well, I move to authorize the director to sign the proposed services agreement with United Medical LLC for one, for a one-year term.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote, Susan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And then me, yes.
You?
Okay, the next thing. So scroll to my bad heading. So that actually should say electrical system unable to maintain a connection to line power, but. Think I was a little flustered when I started writing that. But last week, after the snowstorm. The generator kicked on and our breaker cut us off from line power. Who knows, I mean, we were just looking, that's kind of weird, so Dan called Absolute Comfort, Charlie from Absolute Comfort came out. Along with their electrician of choice, which is Clayco Electric, they came out, the generator was working like it was supposed to, the transfer switch. Did exactly what it was supposed to do, so once the line power was cut off, the generator came on. We did get an alarm call because it's designed that way. They flipped the breaker back on, and it's a thousand amp breaker. It's more than what we have in our homes, and there's a whole process to flip it on. And like wind stuff and do weird things, but anyway, they turned it back on, saying, we don't know what happened, but we'll flip it back on and. Move on down the road. The next day, about twenty hours later, it tripped again. That's not necessarily a good thing, so they came back out and said. It's probably a bad breaker or a line is faulting, but it's not a very good thing. And as you know, we moved in here on, we started business on May first, twenty twenty-three. That's also the date of substantial completion, and so almost all warranties typically. Now, we do have an extended, extended warranty on some of the HVAC things that we continue to deal with, but on. Other building components, it was a year warranty. That's not great, but I decided, you know, it seems like maybe something might have a little longer warranty, so I kind of scoured. The reams of paper that we got for warranties and everything, and that breaker actually has an eighteen-month warranty. Only issue with that is we're about nineteen months and fifteen days now, kind of around that. I called Straub and they were like, you know, we're just going to move forward with. This should be a warranty thing, we're not that far out if they want to, you know, really cross-check stuff. But we're not telling them, we're just telling them, we want warranty worked up. So they were here on last Thursday. I was here with them that night, we tested stuff, two people from Evergy. Um, Alpha Electric, the subcontractor that did the work, and John from Straub. Dustin was here for a while, I think, and we walked out the, or I walked out the door about nine fifteen on line power. By the time I got home at ten, it already had kicked off. Dan is calling me saying, what'd you do? And he really thought I broke it, but I did not, Dan, so that's, that was a problem. They wanted to do some more troubleshooting, Dan took the next shift, he was here on Friday night till about seven with them, I think. And they didn't get everything they needed. Schneider Electric is who owns Square D, who makes these breakers. They wanted to get them on the phone, and they have to do some of this testing when no one's here, and so John from Straub. The electrician from Alpha and Schneider Electric did testing for several hours on Saturday morning. And kind of what they determined was that was most likely the breaker. The line seemed to be doing what they should do, but there was some, um, the unknown behavior in the. Break or unexpected behavior in the breaker. They said, we will submit it for a warranty claim, and we'll see what happens. I believe it was yesterday, I got a call, and, or was it the day before? I don't remember. Whatever day, I, I think I talked to you, Dr. Kingsley, I don't remember what day it was, but they basically said. How this will work is they want a commitment from us. The breakers, the good buddy price on this breaker, which is actually, I've seen it anywhere from ten thousand to thirty-four thousand dollars for the breaker. But the good buddy price from Schneider Electric is six thousand three hundred and twenty. Which we're committing to pay, but if they determine that it is a faulty breaker, we won't have to pay that money. We will have or have to pay regardless, the seven thousand dollars for it to be installed, and the five hundred dollars it took to get it overnight delivered. Which I must have talked to you Wednesday, Dr. Kingsley, my days are kind of running together, but anyway. Um, Alpha was out today, I met him out here. He went to, they had a breaker in hand, he just wanted to make sure before we started cutting lines and doing all this, that it was the right breaker. We actually have the right breaker, it's in their hot little hands, they will be bringing it between six and eight tomorrow. I'll be meeting with them at six, Dustin will be coming in here to spend the day with them. To make sure that if our vaccines get out of temp, we can transport them to the right place. But hopefully, we will get out of this, you know, hopefully this fixes the problem. When I talked to Dr. Kingsley, he had mentioned, well, what if that doesn't fix it? There's always that possibility, but they've done a lot of troubleshooting, and this is their best.
So most of the people will be out of the building tomorrow?
We are closed tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I didn't see this.
I think it says last.
Yeah. Oh, did you see it on the door?
But we are, we don't.
Can't be.
You know, Dan had said, well, it could only take a couple hours, and Taylor's like, good, we'll open at ten, and I'm like, well. Things never go that smooth.
No.
So it was, in my mind, I want them to get it, even after they get the new one hooked up, I want them to stay and make sure that it is working, and that we.
Employees, will they be paid tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah.
Except for Dana.
No, Andrew, there's one question I didn't ask when we were talking, I just thought of it with, so the generator's kicked on. So let's say it's a holiday weekend, and this thing tripped on a Friday. How much power did you think that, that we would have got with our generators before we ran out of fuel? Would have made it through the long weekend?
Yes.
It would have, okay. Uh, nothing, nothing was.
Know.
You know on your phone.
We know.
You'll know on your phone, yeah. Okay, so then.
They actually call us. So, yeah, we know when line power gets cut off.
Okay, and nothing was overtly damaged, we didn't lose vaccines, we didn't, everything, the generators kicked on and did exactly what they were supposed to do?
You know, it's probably, it seems like forever, but it is probably like a, no more than a five-second delay. From the time that the line power gets cut off to the generator is providing power. I kept saying, damn, this seems like a long time, and he's like, relax, it's like, you must be counting to like thirty. But it's not very long, but yes, we have, everything, like right now in this meeting, we're running on generator power. And unless you go out back and hear it, you don't notice.
So when, when it goes to generator power, everything in, in the building still is given power, or does it have preferential. Size of the building or preferential rooms that get the energy first, or how does that work?
Oh, right, wrong, or indifferent, I am pretty simple, and I've had other places, even our building and. Uh, Platte City and maybe the one in Parkville, they only had certain outlets that it would power. And we elected in this building to just power everything, so there is no noticeable difference. Except we have to keep getting it fueled up, and we are going through fuel, and it is expensive. So we are spending anywhere, anywhere between seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars a day on diesel, um.
How much a day?
Seven hundred and fifty to a thousand. Um, Dan said we have spent about five thousand dollars today. But that's because we've been there about a week, so, I mean.
So, so. If they, if they go and they find out that the circuit breaker actually was a faulty breaker. Do we get any compensation for any damages or anything like that, that might have been occurred because the breaker went out?
Uh, the warranty is limited to the replacement of the breaker, which is pretty typical, yeah. We didn't buy any kind of extended warranty on that particular breaker or anything. And just like the install and switching it out, that falls on us too. But not having to pay tens of thousands of dollars on the breaker is a good thing. But not having to pay tens of thousands of dollars on the breaker is a good thing.
Yeah, so Dr. Chefe and I talked about this yesterday. How to go forward with this? So so if this happens again, once that kind of what you were talking about, is there something else in in the in the building that's actually causing the circuit to keep tricking or the breaker to keep tripping? We won't know until that happens, obviously. But he said it might behoove us in the future to not have a thousand watt, whatever, circuit breaker, but or amp the circuit breaker, but to do maybe two five hundreds or whatever, maybe five two hundreds or whatever it might be that does the same job. And then it would be more isolated to different parts of the building. That would be easier for us to locate what the issue was. And also, it would be a whole lot cheaper to replace if the circuit breaker went bad.
We're we're kind of set up that way already. We we know there's no bad breakers in the building because the generator is running and none of them have tripped.
Okay.
So the the breaker, the bad breaker is between basically Evergy's service and the CT panel?
The transfer panel.
Transfer panel. So in our electrical room, we have five large breakers. So it's kind of like you described, separates the various parts of the building, not necessarily, well, components of the building, I should say, like one controls the HVAC units, one controls the.
All the lighting or the majority of the lighting.
Yeah, one controls all the outlets, but they're smaller.
And that is actually the troubleshooting that I mentioned. I didn't give into detail, but that's what we were doing all that night was I was giving, I got like twelve thousand steps walking around as they hit different breakers. And we were trying to make that main breaker trip. And it was, it it seemed to be independent of what was going on in the building.
I I agree with what you guys are doing, that we replaced it, and I I'm not going to argue that. I think that's, I think that's excellent. I think going forward, though, that would it behoove us, if this happens again, let's say three years from now or something? Would it be better to have cheaper, you know, main circuit breakers that are maybe five hundred amps instead of one thousand? Because it sounds like the one thousand one is hard to find and it's really expensive. Whereas the more common ones would be cheaper to replace, all that kind of stuff, so. I I guess, do we really need just like one huge, super one, you know, one thousand amp circuit breaker, I guess?
I think the thing with that as well is if you wind up putting another five, like you do two five hundred breakers, you're also going to have to run lines from that that breaker to the rest of the 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 breakers we have established in the electric room, where I'm sure they're all a bunch of two hundred two hundred amp breakers, and it's got all of our smaller breakers on top of it. But laying those like really heavy duty, like high voltage cables is is a pretty expensive thing. So running another, like running two five hundred amps is going to require more additional wiring that is is going to be able to handle that that high voltage. I don't know if that would be necessarily a long term savings or would cost more than replacing another thousand amp breaker.
We we lucked out. We got like, like Andrew was saying, we got this good neighbor deal, but we may not get that in the future, right? We may have to pay the full thirty thousand dollars or whatever for a new one.
So when we put in the generator and we're working on the electric, Zach's absolutely right. So we had to actually put in new lines because the way the engineer originally had it, Evergy and the electricians said, you can't do it that way. So we actually ended up having a change order, and I don't know if you remember how much it was. I think it was fifty nine thousand dollars to run those lines that you were talking about from the generator. And I learned something, I didn't realize this, but basically you have two sets of lines, one running from the generator to every single circuit breaker in the electrical room, and one from the line power, which is coming from that expensive circuit breaker going to every single breaker. So those breakers actually are connected to the generator and to line power at the same time. That's part of why when you were messing with this stuff, you have to unhook every, like parts of it all get unhooked. So you can change that breaker, but anyway, it would, we would have to pay to have it redesigned. I don't know. I think part of it is, I think, let's see if this fixes it and what that term is. And then if we have a problem again, I think then what you said makes a lot of sense, Dr. Kingsley. We may need to look at how that's designed.
Yeah, I I don't know how much a five hundred amp circuit breaker is. I mean, I don't, I'm not privy to all that kind of information. We'd have to look into it, but I I agree with what you're saying, Zach, that it would be an expensive ordeal to do that, and I get that. I'm just saying, if if this, it becomes a perpetual problem in or whatever, maybe three years from now, we have the same issue or whatever. There might be something to think about. Make, Andrew, make sure when we do this that we try to max out our warranty on this new one, since we're buying it and on paying the extra money on top of these things. If it's another eighteen months or if we can get it to twenty four months, just to give us a little bit more leeway in case this happens again.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. We are trying to do everything we can not to do this again.
Thank goodness for a good generator.
Yeah.
So I guess, I don't have anything on here, but I suppose it would be great, and I should have written it down, and I'm sorry I didn't. If the board could go ahead and make the motion to authorize me to at least spend this amount. If we're going to go over, we'll have an emergency meeting. But if the board could authorize me to spend this amount to make these repairs, that would be helpful to have.
Do we have a motion?
And I believe it would be thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay, I move that we allow Andrew to spend, should we say up to twenty thousand, or do I need to do the eighteen?
You can say up to twenty, but I would take care of any ancillary things.
To spend up to twenty thousand dollars dealing with the breaker issues.
Do we have a second?
Second that.
Okay, any further debate? Susan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay, is that everything, Andrew? Are we done at the at the end now? Okay, so I guess, do we have a motion? Oh, wait, our next meeting will be February twentieth, twenty twenty five at six P M. Do we have a motion to end the meeting?
Actually, I had one, one question.
Andrew, Zach, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, do you, do you have the necessary funds to keep the like generator fueled? Is that something you can pull from, or is that something that eventually you're going to need the board to approve additional funding for for refilling?
We have the funds to take care of it, so at this point, no, and I'm looking at it as, you know, we got to have it, so. And hopefully, by this time tomorrow, we're done with this expense, so.
Hopefully, we don't use all the reserves.
Well, we actually, so when Angie was here, we were describing the reserve accounts, and she was asking a little bit about it. And I said, yeah, the problem is, once we put money into those reserve accounts, we've intentionally made it, so we can't hardly get it out. You know, it's, and we can't get it out without a plan to pay it back.
Yeah.
You've already made the motion to deal with the breaker issue up to the twenty thousand dollar mark. I think the fuel that we've spent would be covered under that at this point. And between what I can do just on my own, I think we got it covered, Zach.
Get some back, right? With the, if the word, the six, six thousand.
No, we won't get any money, that's not fuel. We'll get money back on the breaker. Yeah.
Yeah, if if the breaker is faulty and they can show it, yeah, exactly, yep.
If the board wanted to go ahead and make a motion to approve maybe ten thousand dollars more in diesel fuel if needed, that'd probably be good to have on the books, so we didn't have an emergency meeting.
That's fine. Anybody want to make a motion on that one?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Andrew Worland to have an additional ten thousand dollars of funds for any emergency fuel refilling for the generator for the building.
Do we have a second?
Second that.
Any further discussion? Susan? Kim? Zach?
Yes.
Me, yes. And hopefully, we don't have to dip into that money, Andrew.
So next meeting, February twentieth, and I think Justin, a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a motion?
That we adjourn the meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Susan?
Yes.
Kim? Zach?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay, guys, thank you very much. Have a good rest of the month.
Can you stop recording? Can you guys stay on just a second?
Yeah, what's up?
Stop recording here.